All right, I'd like to call this evening's meeting to order at seven o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order at seven o'clock. Good evening. Thanks, everybody. All right. We do have two commissioners absent this evening. Commissioners Crane and Desalas are both out this evening. So getting started with our agenda, so item number two, citizens communication. The planning and zoning commission welcomes comment on items relevant to the commission not already scheduled on tonight's agenda. In accordance with the Texas Attorney General's opinion, any public comment that's made on an item that is not on the published agenda will only be heard by the commission. No formal action, discussion, deliberation, or comment will be made by the commission. Each person providing public comment will be limited to three minutes will be asked to state his or her name and address for the public record. I do have several folks that signed up to speak on a specific agenda item, and we will have you all come up while we're discussing that particular agenda item. That was five A. But if there's anyone wishing to address the commission outside of that item, I'd be happy to hear you now. All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to the item number three, the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine by the commission and will be enacted by one motion. The items include preliminary and final plats where staff has found compliance with all minimum subdivision regulations. All items approved by consent are approved with any and all staff recommendations. There will not be separate discussion of these items. If any commissioner decides to discuss an item or desires to discuss an item on the consent agenda, we can move it to the regular agenda for further consideration. Are there any items any commissioner wishes to remove from the consent agenda? All right. All items will remain on there. First of all, we have item three A approving a final plat for B nine pecan subdivision. Three B is approving a preliminary plan for the system stall station preliminary plan. Three C is approving a final plat for lifestyle communities phase two. Three D approving a final plat for Carmel East Phase One. Three E approving a final plat for Carmel East Phase Two. And three F approving the planning and zoning commission meeting minutes from April twenty twenty four. I'll accept a motion in a second to approve these items.
I'm to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
All right. Fantastic. All in favor? Any opposed? All right. Motion passes. Thank you all. All right. Next up on the agenda, we do have a public hearing. The commission welcomes comment on the following items. Each person providing public comment will be limited to three minutes and will be asked to state his or her name and address for the public record. Looks like we have Jeremy up first for item four A for a zoning application.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioner. So this item is regarding property that's located at the southeast corner of Schultz Lane and A W Grimes Boulevard, just north of Flugerville Parkway and west of the Cambridge subdivision. I'm sorry, Springbrook Glen subdivision. Just on the screen there on the aerial, you can see that the seven eleven is just to the west. So the subject property is the red that's outlined in red, and there's two different pieces there, and we'll go over that here in a minute. But just to the west is seven eleven convenience store. Further to the north is a Starbucks coffee shop that was just recently constructed. Then further west is A W Grimes, followed by retail and gas station, as well as a car wash. And at the southwest corner is the CVS. Convenience location, the retail shop there. So the, like, as I mentioned, the two tracks that we're talking about tonight are shown there in red. So just to kind of go back and do a little bit of history, give you a little bit of background on the particular property and the condition that it's in. Back in two thousand and nine, the city was looking at widening Flugerville Parkway, basically from just a little bit west of Railroad. And we created that connection over to Green Lawn Boulevard. During that widening process, we also were evaluating how Schultz Lane came through. It used to just head directly south and connect into Flugerville Parkway, which is what you can see in the image on the left-hand side. That's an image from early in two thousand and nine. Later in two thousand and nine, when Schultz was able to be realigned, that's the configuration that we see today, and that's what's on the right-hand side of the screen. So that just kind of shows you where the road used to be, where it is today. That land that used to be Schultz Lane that extended further to the south, as you can see, the road was removed. There was right-of-way there during the land transaction. That right-of-way was transferred over to the property owner. They then went through the process of pulling that land into their property. They did a replat with the city and established what on this is a replat that created two lots. Created the seven eleven property, which is the lot that doesn't have the red outline on it. And then the red outline is pulling in the land that they had, plus the Schultz Lane right-of-way to establish roughly a two-acre piece of property. The area that's shaded there in that gray color is approximately one point four four acres of land. That's the piece of property that we're talking about tonight to apply zoning to. When the land was transferred over, the former right-of-way actually had zoning on it, and it still does. It was the general business one zoning district that we call today general business one. But Schultz Lane never obtained zoning on it. And so it sat in this configuration now. This plat was done in twenty twelve, and it sat like this until today. And so the applicant has acquired the property, interested in doing development on the property. You can see in the top-left corner, there's a portion that's already zoned general business one. In fact, it's approximately point six nine six acres, so a little bit more than half an acre is zoned general business one district. Then they have the one point four four acres that doesn't have a zoning associated with it. They proposed a zoning case to zone it to the general business one district so it would be consistent with the land that they gave up. They relinquished for the right-of-way. They wanted to have that zoning on this particular property. In further conversations with them, we came to kind of a consensus on maybe there was an ability to add a little bit of the general business one. So it would be adjacent to their existing property that was zoned general business one, and then the remainder to be zoned to the retail district. The retail district provides a little less land uses than the commercial that's allowed inside of the general business one district. Also creates an opportunity for a little bit more compatibility. So general business one district, we find that along our arterial streets such as like A W Grimes or Flugerville Parkway. We have six eighty-five is probably the location that we see most of our general business one zoning on it. It supports providing services and goods and retail opportunities that serve both our city, but also has the opportunity for larger scale that could support regional types of development. The retail district is intended to be used as more of kind of that neighborhood services opportunity. So that it's providing media, goods, and services or retail opportunities to the neighborhoods that are in and around that area. Comprehensive plan identified this whole area as being neighborhood, retail, office, commercial to support those kinds of uses. You can see not only in this property, but also the tracks just to the west and southwest also have that classification on it. Again, looking for commercial types of land uses that could help support the area. The comprehensive plan also further talks about different districts and separates the or divides the city up into different categories and different districts there. This one happens to be within the Upper West Side District. As you can see, the yellow represents the residential, green is our parks. Purple is more of the employment and in the red is the mixed use. And so this, the, this particular district had a lot of focus because of all the residential is increasing the amount of pedestrian and bicycle activity. Creating more opportunities for the access and the safety. And looked at also with our park system of making sure that people could get connected to there and look at trails as a potential opportunity for transportation. The little corner over on the bottom left-hand side is the area that we're talking about that's also that neighborhood commercial. In conversations with the applicant, the applicant did revise their application to, they recognized where our concern was of making sure that there was compatible land uses within the area. They also had a situation where they have a portion of their property is currently zoned that general business one district. This would apply additional zoning there so that they could continue with their land use on that location without having a split of zonings there. But then also recognizing the compatibility with the adjacent neighborhood. Any development that does occur on this property, whether it's in the retail zoning district or the general business one district, will require the compatibility design standards that are already built into our unified development code. The split zoning, as I mentioned, just offers that those two different opportunities. So staff does recommend approval. The applicant is here and able to answer any kind of questions that you might have, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have, whether on this particular one or the history of it.
Great, thank you. Is there any one from the public question to speak on this item while we have the public hearing open?
Move to close. Move to close public hearing.
All right, all in favor? All right. Sounds good.
I don't have any questions.
Is the R just because you can't put GB one next to subdivision?
You can. You can put, you could put GB one right next to the single family. What we were looking at was just opportunities for neighborhood sensitive land uses, maybe reducing some of the land uses there. So it provides that transition into the single-family neighborhood.
Move to approve? Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. The motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have item five A under our discuss and consider. So this is regarding an application for a subdivision waiver.
All right. Good evening. Tonight's request is for the Decamolpe subdivision waiver. The applicant is requesting five separate waivers. To begin with, UDC fifteen sixteen C states that all streets are to be stubbed out into a subject subdivision boundary shall be extended. And then we're looking for four separate alleviations from UDC fifteen point sixteen six C, which is for pedestrian pass-throughs for any blocks longer than one thousand feet. We'll get into this detail just in a moment. So to begin with a little background, the eighty-five acre property is located on the north side of State Highway forty-five. We're to the west of State Highway one thirty and to the south of the Green Ridge subdivision. The property was annexed in two thousand and three and then rezoned in two thousand and seven to CL five and then CL four. The CL four is the lighter color to the north. And then we had a preliminary plat that was approved in August of two thousand and twenty-four. The EPCAN originally had a PAC meeting with staff back in September of two thousand and twenty-three, where the EPCAN shared their concept plan for the property, depicting around seventy-four point six acres of multifamily development, broken down into multiple phases. Being that the property at the time was unplatted, the first step in the process would be to plat. The property was being viewed at the time that the city was amending the corridor districts. The applicant had asked to move forward with a preliminary plan to be submitted. By doing so, would be vested to those uses or allowances before the corridors were amended. As part of the subdivision process, all streets that are stubbed into the subdivision boundary are to be extended. All stub streets from the Green Ridge subdivision to the north required to extend down to the south. That would include Peach Vista, which you can see just to the right-hand side of it that connects down to Row Lane. And then we have Bark Way, which is in the subdivision to the north. And when it comes into the property and starts heading east, changes its title to Trinity Settlement Lane. Also does require that block lengths that are over a thousand feet in length are to have a fifteen-foot pass-through lot. Being that lots one and two, which are on the south side of Row Lane, are over a thousand feet north to south. They both require the vertical pass-through. There is a sixty-foot breakup in the middle that prevents them from having to have a horizontal breakup. And then on the north side of Row Lane, to the west of Peach Vista. For lots three and four, there is a combined vertical and horizontal block length that both exceed the one thousand feet, requiring both a vertical and horizontal pass-through lot. Again, the preliminary plan was, this preliminary plan here was approved in two thousand and twenty-four in August. Where all subdivision requirements were met, the applicant is now asking for these five subdivision waivers. Just as a reminder, a block length is the distance between two thorough streets, as is shown on the top right-hand side there in the black. Cul-de-sacs or alleys are not considered thorough streets and do not consider as a breakup of a block length. On the right-hand side here, we have an example of a pedestrian pass-through. This is a fifteen-foot easement that has extended the entire depth of the block. It contains a minimum pass-through for hike and bike trail that is to be designed in accordance with the city engineering design manual and construction standards. So per the UDC fifteen fifteen, upon written requests and demonstrated by the applicant, the planning and zoning commission can consider a waiver from the requirement of the subject where one of the following are met. One, the literal enforcement of provisions of the subject actor may not be physically obtainable. Two, the requirement does not appear to be reasonably applicable in a specific case. Or three, compliance with the requirement would result in an undesirable situation. For criteria A and B, none of these requests complies, complies as in approved preliminary plan would show evidence that enforcement of the UDC requirements is physically obtainable. And there is no specific case or obstacle preventing code from being met. Therefore, each request would need to provide evidence of an undesirable situation that would be contrary to the public interest and destroy the intent of the provisions of the UDC. The planning and zoning commission may approve or deny all of them together or do them individually, whichever you would like. Please be aware that conditions or alternative designs may not be placed as they, as we do in the past for like a special use permit. If the waiver is approved, the UDC subdivision requirement would be absent, and we wouldn't have the ability to apply those extra conditions. So to recap, we are looking at five waivers, including the removal of the Trinity Settlement Lane, and then the four separate fifteen-foot pass-through easements. So we're going to begin with the first request. On the left-hand side, that is the approved preliminary plan, and on the right-hand side, that is the applicant's recommended alternative. So per UDC fifteen sixteen three, it states that all streets that are stubbed into the subdivision have to be extended. The applicant is requesting to develop a cul-de-sac instead of replacing Bark Way. So what we have, the Trinity Settlement Lane is an estimated one thousand two hundred and eighteen feet, and we would be connecting there to the extension of Peach Vista Drive. This would not be in line with the intent of the code as the conditions for the roadway provide additional connectivity and routes of travel within the immediate area. Connectivity to roadway, trail, bike, and pedestrian systems is critical for the Flugerville Transportation Master Plan and Development Code. Therefore, the requested waiver does not support the connectivity goals of the city. Per the applicant's letter of intent, they make reference to a Texas Local Government Code, section two twelve, which states, "The municipal authority responsible for approving plats may not require the dedication of land within a subdivision for a future street or alley that is not intended by the owner of a tract of land, not included, funded, and approved in a capital improvement plan adopted by the municipality or similar plan adopted by the county and the municipality of local state." We took this concern with our team, and it is the city's determination that this city is not requiring the dedication of any land for a future street that the city intends to construct, but rather the city is requiring that they develop or construct a street in compliance with the city's connectivity regulations. Therefore, it's the city's determination that this section does not apply. I forgot to mention, as part of the applicant's recommended alternative is to provide a fifteen-foot landscape area to be a buffer yard to the north. The city would not be, this would not be ideal as there is currently, per the UDC, a thirty-foot restriction. And per the plat that was approved, there is currently shown a fifty-foot vegetated buffer. So the city would not be in favor of that request. For request number two and three, we're looking at fifteen sixteen six. These are the vertical and horizontal pass-through lots connecting from Row Lane and west of Peach Vista. So as I mentioned, the fifteen sixteen states that all commercial and residential subdivisions shall have a minimum fifteen-foot pass-through mid-block for one thousand feet, any block that is one thousand feet or greater. Lots three and four currently have an east-to-west width of an estimated one thousand two hundred and seventy-five feet and a combined eastern property of two thousand feet. The current pass-through lot easement is around eight hundred and sixteen feet north to south, being that it currently starts at Trinity Settlement Lane. The pass-through lot allows for both walking, biking commuters to have additional routes of travel and ease while traveling through the property and connecting to the neighboring trails and sidewalk, as is the intent of the UDC chapter fifteen. The applicant's recommended alternative is to provide a fifteen-foot landscaping, I'm sorry, a fifteen-foot sidewalk on the north side of Row Lane and the west side of Peach Vista and around a proposed pond. The alternative would not be encouraged by staff for the following. To start, the pond or the regional park that the applicant makes reference to in their letter is not a designed parkland area. But rather, this is a detention pond. That's a constructed depression that temporarily stores stormwater runoff rather than a manicured amenity. Additionally, the detention pond has UDC requirements for screening, which would include a four-foot ridearm fence. And according to the preliminary plan that exists right now, the applicant has already taken us to the Parks Board and elected to pay fee and lieu for parkland dedication and won't be constructing any parkland as no area on the approved preliminary plan right now depicts any designation of parkland area. The fifteen-foot, fifteen-foot pass-through lot running north to south allows for, again, the walking and biking travel from Trinity Settlement to the centrally-located Row Lane. And again, for the pond area. If we were to have any destination park or amenities within the development or area, staff would encourage the current additional routes of connectivity and not the less. Requests four and five are for the same. As we mentioned, there is a sixty-foot right-of-way which separates the two. That's why there's no horizontal for this one. These pass-through lots, there's lot one is an estimated six hundred and twenty-eight feet, and lot two is six twenty-five. Again, this lot allows for both walking and biking commuters to have that additional route of travel and ease while traveling through the property. The applicant's request is to have an alternative fifteen-foot pedestrian access on the south side of Row Lane. This alternative would also not be encouraged by staff. To begin, similar to lots three and four on the north side, the easement running northwest, the property to the east of the subject property has the same fifteen-foot pass-through lot easement, thus displaying an overall uniformed connectivity throughout the area. And if alter this, would create several dead ends. I'll show a better example of that in a moment. Let me see. And also similar to lot three, the both properties on either side of the subject property display a ten-foot sidewalk on Row Lane. So it really wouldn't see, we wouldn't see the benefit of going from ten feet to fifteen feet, back to ten feet if there was no amenities included in that area. So to look at this altogether, which may be clearer, I've outlined here the property in red to show its central location. All of the properties to the north side there have a currently approved preliminary plan, and I stacked those next to each other so you can see how they're currently laid out. They all have connectivity as the Green Ridge subdivision has been extended, and they also include those fifteen-foot pass-through easements. What I'm showing here on this slide is you can see the subject properties in the red, and then the blue lines represent the sidewalks. You can see that there's currently ten feet along Row Lane, and then we have six feet running north to south along Peach Vista. And then there's also going to be that on the Trinity Settlement Lane. The green lines that I'm showing here are the fifteen-foot pass-through easements. You can see here that there is a uniformity and encourages connectivity of travel, not just within the individual track, but to its neighbors as well. And if these waivers, if all the waivers were to be approved. You can see here that a lot of those horizontal travel routes easements have multiple dead ends now. That would require those traveling to be forced to utilize just one sidewalk or roadway. For those looking to have alternative transportation routes, this would bottleneck through the property and provide less points of access. And as we mentioned before, having the sidewalk going from ten feet to fifteen feet, back down to ten feet with no additional recreation or purposes would not be necessary. You can also see with the removal of Trinity Street on the fifteen-foot pass-through easements, there's far less connectivity to the proposed pond area or any amenities that would be utilized on site. So to give an example of what this would look like. If, this is saying that those two fifteen-foot pass-through easements and the roadway were to be removed. If that were to happen, first, if you remove Trinity Settlement, that would create the additional need for the block length breakup as the eastern property line is now getting longer, or the eastern block length is now getting longer. And two, let's say that I was trying to be at the intersection of Bark Way and I was trying to trying to get all the way to Row Lane. I'm at the intersection of Boone Valley Drive and Barkway. Currently, the preliminary plat allows for that travel to be just a little over 2,300 feet. If those were to be removed, that would take me about double to get there. So you can see that's providing less connectivity. Based on the criteria of the UDC, staff does not believe that the applicant has provided evidence of an undesirable situation that would be contrary to the public interest, and destroy the intent of the provisions of the UDC. Staff would recommend denial of all five requests. The applicant is here, and they have a small presentation that they would like to share with you. At the time that I sent out the staff report, I had received 14 or 15 letters of objection, and those were included with your packet. And since that time, we've received an additional 10, and I believe those were printed out and handed to you.
All right.
Thank you. Excellent. And with that, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, do you want to, I'm going to have you all come up.
I'm actually just going to talk. I'm not going to give a presentation. Hi, y'all. It's been a while since I've seen some of you. I'm Amanda Swerwood, Runner Group. Thank you for letting us be here today. I did just have one clarification slash question. I know that staff says letters of objection, but to my understanding, all of the letters that were submitted are actually letters of support for the variance request. And we met multiple times with the neighborhood next to us, so I don't think letters of objection's quite fair. Is that, am I accurate there?
No, that's accurate. Those were letters in support of the request.
So I think at this point, we have about 24 letters of support for our request for this project. We've spent a lot of time on this project. I think I first got brought into this probably three years ago, so it's great to see you all be able to talk about it. What we really wanted to focus on is, you know, as staff was showing, this is a big project that has a lot of roads, a lot of locations, a lot of connectivity. We have met with the neighbors. I think there are several here that want to speak with you tonight to express their support in granting the waiver request for the extension of the road that deadends into their subdivision further into our property. But one of the big things that we also want to talk about, and we submitted a letter to the city today, is really the overall rough proportionality concept that hasn't been implemented with this project. I know that we just sent this letter. We haven't received a response back, an acknowledgement. Again, we submitted it this afternoon. But ultimately, rough proportionality talks about the impact that a project has, and what the city can require back. So this project is extending Peach Vista, it is extending Row Lane, it is providing multiple trails. What our hope is, is that this commission will grant these waivers, which will allow the city to stay within their rough proportionality allowances on what they can actually ask our project to do. The other thing that I would want to bring up and talk about is the consistency of the enforcement of these waivers. There are at least two other projects that we're aware of that did not have to come here and get subdivision waivers to not be required to have a block length cut through through their projects, that have, again, over the size of block length that our project does. And so we're looking for why our project is being required to put these in and come for a waiver when there, again, are at least two other projects that have been approved since these regulations were in play, that did not have to go through this process, and we were not given any options. And most importantly, I just encourage you to listen to the neighbors as well. They, they have a voice in this. If this, if these waivers are granted, we have made the commitment, staff said no parkland, but we have made the commitment that we would be putting in over a five-acre Play For All Abilities Park that would go where this roadway is. If you have the roadway extension as well as the pedestrian paths, it's over three acres of land that we're being asked to dedicate out of this project. We would take, again, over five acres and put in an all abilities park. We know that we would need to go back to Parks Board, but that is something that we have and committed to do in our letters and continue to do. So with that, I think I threw a lot at you, and I'm happy to answer any questions, and I know there's speakers here too.
Great, thank you. All right, I think, let's, actually, yeah, if you don't mind.
Sure, just, yeah, just briefly, really three things I want to point out. Ron, the applicant did file a rough proportionality request, excuse me, that's separate and apart from the issue of the request for the waiver. City's going to process that rough proportionality request like it, like it's required to do under the statute, and make a determination as to whether or not the requirement of the road is, meets the rough proportionality requirements of the statute. With respect to the letters of support, I mean, it's obviously good that they've reached out to the neighbors and have support for the project, but our local regulations don't allow you to take into consideration support from the community with respect to the project. You still have to have the findings that are provided for in the ordinance. You have to make those findings. And then, what was, I think there was one last thing. I think, maybe that's it. Just those two? I'm sorry? No, it wasn't the parkland. I should, I was trying to write it down, and I didn't get the third one written down. But those two are, are, you know, are the most important. Rough proportionality, yes, they filed it. We're going to come, we'll, we'll process it like we process anything else. And it is good that they've gotten neighbor support, but, you know, our statute, our ordinance, rather, requires you to make certain findings.
Did you have any other clarity on the, the reasons why there were exceptions made at other developments?
Oh, that was the third thing. Thank you very much. Don't, don't have any facts about that, but it's not relevant to your decision tonight. The fact that we may or may not have required, staff may or may not have required other people to go through this process, doesn't impact the fact that this, they are, they are being required to go through this process. Thank you. All right, that was it. That was the one.
The proportionality issue gets decided in their favor, would that just kind of make what we're doing null and void?
I really don't, I, I can't say that for sure, because I don't know, I don't necessarily know what the outcomes of those might, might be.
Sure.
I, I can tell you that if you grant the waiver, it'd probably make it moot.
Thank you, appreciate that. Since we did have some community members here, I, I would like to give them a, a chance to speak. So let me, let's see, the first one I had was Daniel Brown.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm here to really voice my support for the project. You have a huge opportunity here. I'm not from this neighborhood. I live over in Cambridge Estates, off of Ammanaluthan Road. Many of my friends and colleagues are here also with Fugerville ISD, and also in support of the All Abilities Park. They work very hard with these folks to give them the opportunity to get out and play, essentially. But with all due respect to staff, the preliminary site plan is absolutely by the book. I mean, you can't doubt that. But what I'd like you to realize is that you do have an opportunity for a developer to throw some big money into this for a park. And the key word here in Fugerville tells its trail system and its park very heavily. And I think that going forward with the design as it is, is certainly not conducive to the way it's laid out right now, but my big concern here is these crosspaths. I think there could be some flexibility in the waivers when it comes to the crosspaths, and get some creative networking going throughout this neighborhood. The Trinity, I think it's Trinity Lane, is this? Which extends the Barkway.
Trinity Settlement?
Yeah, Trinity Settlement Lane. That's, that's a tough one. I'm, I've been in the transportation business for many, many years, and I know you need ingress, egress, and all of that type of connectivity, and that offers that. However, there should be some alternative. Now, I understand that there is another access in and out that, that's the north end of the subdivision. I have not seen it. I looked on Google Earth, I really couldn't make it out. But if there is an alternative to ingress and egress to provide essentially the same connectivity, I would certainly let, you know, it would be good to consider that. I do have a question on that lane, is the first waiver mentions that state law precludes the planning and zoning commissions to essentially place roads in there that aren't on their transportation improvement plan? Do you know if this particular lane is in the tip, or was planned to be built at some point?
I'm not sure if it was or not. We can certainly, yeah.
If I, if I read the waiver correctly, and the state of Texas, and local codes and all that, you might want to take a look at that on the first waiver. I think that is something that would have to be considered, as far as being on the transportation improvement plan, or whether or not state of Texas allows it to, to happen. I don't know, I think I have three minutes, it might be up.
It did just.
Am I up?
Appreciate your comments, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
All right, next I had Michael Lang.
Good evening. So my name's Michael Lang, I live in 19913 Barkway, which is one of the roads that's going to be impacted if this roadway is pushed through. I'm not entirely clear on this new road, what's going to be on the roadway. Are there going to be houses adjacent to Boone Valley? Because if you're not familiar with Boone Valley, we get people cutting through the, through the neighborhood when they come in off of Cheyenne, off of Heatherwild, and they'll come zooming down to Boone Valley, and then shoot across to Peach Vista, and there's many homes there. Currently on Barkway, we have about nine houses on that street. So I'm fearful that, you know, we're going to have a lot more traffic coming through on Barkway, shooting through this little stubbed street that's going to be pushed through. I was on the Zoom call with the developer when they spoke about an alternative of having the park there, and there was about 20 some-odd folks on that call that were, seemed to be mostly supportive of having the park instead of having the street. The other thing to be aware of is, is Peach Vista that was put in, that's now a drag strip. There's cars that go down that street, literally racing, and they've wrecked into homes, fences on the backs on, on Peach Vista, and damaged property. So that's what you're going to see probably more of on this Peach Vista when it gets pushed through, further down. So we're really concerned about the roadway getting punched through that's currently a stub. And it's like, what is that distance between Boone Valley and this new roadway? That just doesn't seem like it's logical, because if there's nothing going to be there, it's going to be dead space, and you're just going to have people cutting through. So I stand in opposition of requiring the stub with the roadway being extended, so.
All right, thank you very much for your comments. All right, next up, Frank Fuentes.
Mr. Chairman, honorable members of this committee, my name is Frank Fuentes, I'm chairman of the U.S. Hispanic Contractors Association, in support of the various requests, and in support of my good friend, Sop, who is an amazing organization here in Fugerville that do a lot of work with disability children and adults. I was the chairman of the Board of Adjustments in Austin, Texas, for almost 15 years. I want to thank you for your sacrifice, because I know what it means to be away from the family often, to come and volunteer on these positions, so thank you for doing that. One of the things that I learned when I was on that board is the reason why these boards exist. Oftentimes, the code is very not flexible, if you will, so rigid. And, and I commend staff, staff is amazing here in Fugerville, they follow the rules very well. But you all exist for one reason, and that is to understand and interpret the spirit of the code itself. If you look at this diagram, this, this image that we have up here, you almost see a road to nowhere, a road that I'm sure had a purpose when the, when the ordinance was developed. I would say this ordinance was developed for residential, and not necessarily a multi-family project such as this. The one thing that I really want to point out is that this road that seems to go to nowhere cuts right through a beautiful asset that this developer wants to give to the city, and that's this park. I would ask you that if you are looking for findings of fact, I would, I would suggest that the findings of fact that this is not a residential project, it is a multi-family project with a beautiful, with a beautiful asset to be given to the city. As far as the trails are concerned, again, trails that go to nowhere, because quite honestly, this is in a, in a field with adjacent properties that have not been developed, and we don't know when they're going to be developed. So I would ask that you consider, take that into consideration as well. Again, I want to thank you for your service, I want to thank you for allowing me to speak, and I wish you the wisdom of Solomon, because you, I'm sure you'll, you'll need it, and the strength of King, of King David, because ultimately, if you do grant this variance, you'll have to say no to what staff is saying, and it's a wonderful staff. So deeply understand that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next up I had Amy Weisenhutter?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Amy Weisenhatter. I live over in Stone Hill at 1316 Town Center Drive. I'm a proud employee of Fugerville ISD. I'm an adaptive physical education teacher and special Olympics coordinator for the district. I'm speaking this evening in support of the variance request because of the location of the All Abilities Park. I am in strong support of giving our individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities this opportunity to have a place to retreat and go and have some fun, like we all do. We know when we have hard days and we want to get away, we have a place that we can go to and, and find solace and rest, and I just want those same things for my students and our athletes, and this would give them the opportunity with this All Abilities Park, to have something in their community that accepts them and embraces them and supports them, because we are really striving to live in a community that embraces all. It's not necessarily a program of just inclusion, it's a way of life, and that's what we're striving for at this stage. So I thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of this All Abilities Park for our intellectual and developmental disabilities population. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Yvette Chacon, and I live in 19804 Spotted Owl Lane, I'm off of Calley Lane. We have lived here for 25 years, and I've seen the growth that you, as a city family, have worked so hard for. I know that with all of the development that the city is going through, and All Abilities Park would be a great asset, not only to my family that I have with a special needs daughter, but to all of the Fugerville and surrounding cities. My daughter is in her twenties, but her mind tells her that she's a little girl. And I'd love to take her to our town's Play For All Abilities Park, where she can swing all day and give fist bumps to her friends and all of her new ones. We, as a community, strive to be inclusive in all areas, and I can't wait to be able to include the All Abilities Park, not only to my, in my conversations with others about our next field trip there, but I can't wait to see it in our city's website, where future residents can make the memories that I plan on making with my family. I am in support of the variance request because of the location of where the park is. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, we had one additional person sign up, Paula Dean.
Hello, good evening. I am in support of the variance request because of the location of the park. My name is Paula Dean. I live at 8905 Black Oak Street, that's in Austin. I am the special education teacher and unified champions advisor at Hendrickson High School. I also am the former adaptive, adaptive activities program coordinator for the city of Round Rock. During my time at the city of Round Rock, I got the opportunity to be a part of the design and building team at the Play For All Abilities Park there. It was an exciting process deciding which parts of the park would be built best to accommodate our target audience. And after all the decisions, and all of the building, and all of the time it took, out came the most incredible park I'd ever seen, a park that allows kids of all abilities to play. It has a wheelchair-accessible playscape, sensory area, racetrack with a wheelchair reline, safety swings, and so many musical instruments. reline, safety swings, and so many musical instruments. There is a playscape to get dedicated to a student named Dennis. Um, his dream was to have a park for kids like him to play at. Dennis's dream came true. It is only positive outcomes when our young people of all abilities are given the opportunity to get outside and play. Together, they encourage, find understanding, and become friends in a safe environment. At the end of the day, all the kids in the neighborhood just want to go play at the park. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, one last one. Jerry Haskins.
Hi. Thank you for your time. Um, Jerry Haskins. Um, we live on Boone Valley, and so we are kind of opposed to that Peach Vista or not kind of, we are opposed to Peach Vista being opened up. Um, it really makes no sense. We already have an overabundance of traffic coming through there, high speed all the time. That would just add another route that people could pass through our neighborhood to get through, um, into this park. I mean, I think that the park could be there and it could have that other entrance, but there's really no reason for the short road for it to be opened up. And also, I don't think anybody's talked about the fact that that was put in there. That wasn't even part of Flugerville when those roads were put into that neighborhood. Um, Flugerville, that became part of Flugerville later on. So that's not any part of a master plan. That just happens to be a stub there. It actually, um, borders to our property of Green Ridge. So that's, that's our HOA's property that's actually there. Um, so you'd be, you'd be actually essentially have to figure out to take some of our property from us too at that point, um, which I don't think there's any real eminent domain-ish reasons to take part of our, our association's property. We, we maintain that, that patch of property behind the houses there. Um, so it really doesn't make any sense. It's, it's a senseless opening, um, to put traffic down with this really, you know, um, neighborhood streets that already have too much traffic as a pass through for everybody cutting through to get through a hutto and other places through our neighborhood. So if you consider that and, um, just give, I think they want a variance to not put that in. And then if they could just not, not put that pass through in, let the other road just be there and that's it. Right? Thank you.
All right. Well, I appreciate all of you coming in and speaking with us this evening. Um, I think to, to get started on a couple of points and then we can go around. It wasn't that. It was a courtesy to, not technically a public hearing.
Got it. Got it. Got it. Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I think, um, there are a couple of things that came up. I, I.
Can we start by just addressing the park thing since so much of this is about a park that doesn't exist? What is the city's recourse if the developer receives the waiver tonight and then goes about developing this property, which we know is a very long multi-year process and decides not to put the park in? Does the city have any ability? Like, there's not a park in their thing right now. It's not zoned for parkland. In the 2020 bond, did we have, pass the Play for All Abilities Park in the 2020 bond? I don't remember and the website's not working.
It was a destination park, which we do plan for All Abilities Play at one point six million in the 2020 bond.
Okay. So we're talking about one point six million dollars. I don't get paid for being here tonight. Our city council does not get paid. We are here as volunteers to serve the city of Flugerville. The city council are volunteers to serve the city of Flugerville. The developer is here to make money. They're developing to make money, which is fine. That is what needs to happen for the city to grow and for people to have houses to purchase. But I don't see any guarantee that this developer is going to put in a, a Play for All Abilities Park and your city has already committed to doing that. And that is a multi-year process. So can you help me understand what in any of this have they done to commit to a park legally? And if they decide not to do it after we give them the wa, if we were to give them a waiver and they decide not to put a park in, how do we know this is not a bait and switch?
I can let the applicant speak to that, but as I mentioned, as the original preliminary plan came in, they have gone to the parks board and paid fee and lieu as there is no current parkland dedication.
So if they were committed to parkland, they would have not paid a fee and lieu. They would have included the required parkland in the first place, but they didn't do that.
That wouldn't be the proper procedure.
So they, they not only haven't committed to a Play for All Abilities Park, they paid a fee to not put the minimum requirement parkland in their development.
Yes, please. I would love to hear what you have to say.
Awesome. Thank you. So, um, the preliminary plan that was originally approved, um, as staff mentioned at the beginning, was, uh, it was submitted as the code changes were going through. Um, applications have times that go with them. Our goal when we submitted this application was, we weren't through with design. We needed to go ahead and not let our application expire and went through the preliminary planning process. The parkland that we are talking about for the All Abilities Park is located, does this move? Am I smart? Okay. I'm just going to use words and hope that I get my directions right. Um, is located on the east side of the property, on the northeast side, essentially where.
Proposed.
Pardon?
You said it is located as proposed, right? The park isn't there yet, right?
Proposed. Um, on the northeast side and would frankly straddle where Peach Vista is. There'd be some parking on the east side of Peach Vista and the park, proposed park would be on the west side of Peach Vista. Um, as we were going through the, and someone correct me if I'm, I'm wrong with anything I'm saying. Um, as we were going through the original preliminary plan, um, a lot of the initial input we got frankly was, you know, we weren't there yet. We didn't have a designed project. We didn't know where parkland would go. We always knew that we would be able to come back and have this process and this project. So if we are able to get these waivers, we are able to amend our preliminary plan and put parkland on there. We're able to amend our plan and put those requirements back on this. You know, we're able to go back to the parks board and put what you're looking for as those assurances. Um, my client that has this.
Why didn't you go to the parks board first? Why did you come here first?
Because we can't, we can't put a required park on there if we don't know that we're going to get a waiver. We'd have a, a road going through a park and that would require all kinds of other pieces.
Yeah. So let me, let me go ahead and, and jump in here. I, I am somewhat frustrated because there are ways to do this. Your all's decision to do the preliminary plan and get it in before other code changes that you were aware were coming was a strategic decision on the part of the developers. Um, and I think not going through the process, to your point, paying a fee and lieu for the parkland and, um, and clearly, you know, I'd love to see the community engagement and the neighborhood. Um, however, I can't help but feel it's a little bit deceitful, um, around promising something that's not part of any of the plans. Um, I think if you all are, are truly committed to that, this doesn't necessarily preclude, right? Um, I think you could go through those, those processes and, and figure out a way to, uh, do parkland dedication or a partnership with the city, something like that, right? I think those are always options that are available to any developer in the city. Um, I think that related to, you know, one of the, uh, you know, not just the letter, but the spirit of our code, um, connectivity is a, uh, is always the number one thing, quality of life driver for our.
I usually fight for more stubs, not fewer, so that we have fewer people zooming down your street. Cause if there are no stubs in this property, the people who live in this property, they're going to go down your street.
Yeah. And, and so I guess, you know, again, just, um, there's a few points of, that I, I don't love on, on these waiver requests, right? And it, it is that lack of connectivity, especially with a very large multi-family place. You need more connectivity, I believe, not less. Um, I think looking at the pedestrian pathways too, I think some of the letters that I saw, it seemed to imply that folks thought those might be actual streets. Um, and, and these are pedestrian and bike friendly pathways. Um, I, I would hate to see, and I know at least as long as I've been on the Planning and Zoning Commission, we have always held true to the, um, you know, the commitment to connectivity and especially multimodal. Um, and the only couple of times that we've had cases where, um, a property comes in, uh, not doing something like a stub for a road or connectivity, um, it, it, we've got to look at the long term, right? We've got to look at what does all of these properties look like at full buildout and how are people going to get around? Um, and I think if we grant waivers like this that, um, take away connectivity rather than add to it, um, you know, we're potentially creating problems down the road. So.
Yeah. And additionally to, you know, uh, I see in this letter and in the way it's being presented to the neighborhood as if these roads are going through to nowhere and that we don't know when these are going to be developed. We do know when they're going to be developed. The, the adjacent properties do have, are working on plans. These roads will connect to other subdivisions. So again, as the subdivisions on either side develop and you don't want them cutting through your street, if they don't, if they have to go around this because we granted the waiver, that's going to be more traffic on your street. And we're here as volunteers to serve our city that we live in with y'all. And we know that you don't want more people on your street, which is why if these, when these other houses are built, we need a place for those residents to drive without going through your neighborhood. I am really sorry that you guys were communicated, this letter, I'm guessing since it's a form letter, wasn't written by the neighborhood. It wasn't written by the residents because it is not based on any representation of what we do or what this is for or what these rules are for or what this waiver is about.
Yeah. I'd just like to say, I, I mean, we heard a lot of things from the residents that frankly I agree with quite strongly. I'd love to see a Play for All Abilities Park. I, I'd love to have better connectivity. I, I know that we have some problem areas in our transportation network that people cutting through streets and, um, you know, it's, it's frankly pretty dangerous in some cases. So avoiding that is obviously a priority. Um, I'm a civil engineer by trade and, and so I, when I look at this plan, what, what I see is, you know, some issues, especially connect with connectivity. Because if you, if you don't have these pathways, the kind of the big cross on the top, and you don't have that road which comes out of the stub through and this, this great new proposed park, which is up in that top corner, if you live on the other side of that property and you want to go to that park, you literally will not be able to. You'll have to go all the way down to row lane.
There's a proposed trail. There's a, there's a massive trail network that the city has that runs basically where that, um, road, it, where the, um.
Well, if it's Play for All Abilities, you're going to be putting your kids in the car because they're not going to go on a trail to a Play for All Abilities Park for a mile.
I take my kids to a Play for All Abilities Park also.
Yeah. I, I don't, um, for the fifteen foot, uh, for yard areas, I, I honestly see no, no particular reason other than fitting a few extra units, um, to be able to, uh, to leave those out. And as somebody who, I, lately, since the weather's been pretty great, I've been out on my bike with my, with my kid. And, um, I noticed too that there's a, it feels a lot safer to be on an interior street, to be on an interior road. So the idea of, oh, well, you can put a sidewalk on, on row lane where, you know, cars might be, like you say, zoom past thirty, forty miles an hour. It just doesn't feel safe. It doesn't feel like a place I want to have my kid on a bike or with a stroller or something like that. So, um, and the roadway itself, I, I kind of agree. The way it's shown here with that, the little mini cul-de-sac and the, then going parallel directly over there, that doesn't sound like a great idea. What sounds like a lot better idea and was probably the intent of having these stub-ins to neighborhoods is that the people that live in this new area get to use that as an alternative means in and out. Um, I mean, there was one other incident over here on, what was it? Grand Avenue or something where there's a gas line that, that broke. And so they had to close the street. Couldn't go through that way at all. And like, I mean, I'm not saying, oh, that's going to happen or whatever. And obviously there's safety regulations in place here, but there's, there's all kinds of things that, that could happen that potentially one roadway or another might get blocked or just who knows what traffic patterns are going to be like.
Maybe icy branches fall in the road and you can't drive down it because of all of the branches that need to get cleared out.
So, um, yeah, I mean, the, I, I certainly understand why the developer wants to do the waivers. I, uh, I'm sure they can, they can fit some more units and, 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 and do what they need to do. So I don't, I don't fault anybody for trying, but, um, I, I see a big disconnect between the things that, um, the residents have, have come here to talk about that I agree with greatly and that I think are absolutely possible for this site and the requirement that if these waivers are not granted, that that cannot be done. That's, that's not a connection for me at all.
Yeah. I think when we go back to the criteria, right? I, I'm not seeing good examples here that show how this is a, a burden in the plan. It was in the original plan.
Yeah, it does.
It still is. Um, and I do, I guess one more thing for me and then I'm sure other folks have plenty to chime in as well. Um, I, you know, I, I think for the, the residents that, that came in this afternoon, I think what you're hopefully hearing from, from folks up here is that, um, certainly we would love to see, um, an All Abilities Park and the city is very much committed to that. Um, I think we are.
When is it going to start? Oh, sorry.
And then I, I know we've heard, um, and we hear this fairly frequently too, right? And, and you mentioned this, um, there are certain parts of town where cut through traffic is, is problematic. Um, and I think we recognize that. And I think that that is, again, something that the city can and will work to, um, to improve, right? Um, we can, and will absolutely take that as an action with, with staff to make sure that we're, um, looking at the, at these roads. I think they're already on the list of roads where, uh, there's a known problem, um, in these in particular. Um, so I, I don't want you all to think that, you know, whether or not the waiver is granted, that traffic calming and figuring out those problems is, is not going to be an, an issue. Um, it is certainly something that the city can and should address. So, um, I'll pause there.
So I'm new on the commission. Um, but just some questions, I guess, points of clarity that I'd like to understand. So there's five waivers. One could be accepted and other ones could be rejected. I think one, one point of confusion is a very long staff report, so I might've missed it. But from what I'm seeing here and what they were describing as this possible location for a park, uh, it sounds like two of the waivers, mostly waiver one, is the impact to that designation, potential designation area. Um, so is my understanding correct? Maybe, I don't know if it's city staff or developer. Um, the park, which is the, the place of most interest, you know, I was on the Parks Commission for a term. Uh, that was something we talked a lot about, the, the regional park. And every single time, um, you know, I, I personally and others on the commission would note the need for that to be in All Abilities Play. I was actually part of the design team that worked at Rosedale for AISD, um, and that park at that location. Um, so it's something that's very important to me. I ride at the Rosedale Ride every single year. Um, so I want to say that that's something that I feel very passionate about and obviously other folks on this feel very passionate about. So one, I think, I just have the general question of, are all of these waivers a direct relation to this, um, All Abilities Park possible location or is it just waiver one?
So where, and, and the location of the park is what you're saying?
So, so most of these comments related to, please accept these right waivers. I think I just want to understand too, just the, like, the, the, the different waivers we have in front of us. There are five waivers.
Correct.
From what I heard of where this possible location could be, that's not directly related to the five waivers. There's only specific waivers in which, um, has, has been in, in relation to this potential park area. I think I just wanted to understand that a little bit better, folks.
So based on what I've heard in the northeastern quadrant is where that parkland is going to be. And so right now that road connectivity through there is going through where she's saying the park would be located, but also the park or the current street's layout was also established in the preliminary plan. It didn't have to have this layout. It could have connected straight to row lane. It could be more centrally located. So the current configuration, configuration of that roadway was also the applicant's decision.
So that weird stub out at the top that goes, when you would expect it to go down through and it cuts over to row, that was their design? Or cuts over to?
Instead of, instead of connect, uh, where it comes out of Barkway.
The Barkway, yeah.
It could have gone south.
So that's not the city, that's the developer. Okay. And does any of these waivers directly relate to a park in any way directly? Like?
The parkland dedication fee and lieu was paid for the original preliminary plan. And if all the waivers are approved, there's no, there's nothing that I can place on this that would require.
If they want to put a park in, they can with and without the waivers. Waivers have nothing to do with a park. Got it.
So a fee and lieu has already been paid to the city. Okay.
So a fee and lieu was approved. A fee and lieu has not been paid. That would happen later in the process. Um, we would always have the ability to come back and amend. Again, they, it's chicken and egg, right? If, if the, so to answer your first question, the road location is what is the most impactful to the park. All of it comes together. They all have a financial cost, right? There, that's, that's real life. Um, can, we've made this commitment on the record. We're willing to come into any type of commitment to require the All Abilities Park. That's something that we have talked about and would do. We can go back to the Parks Department. Um, but yes, a Parks, what did we say? Yeah. A parkland fee, parkland dedication fee has been approved, which is required in code. You have to go to the Parks Board. Um, but the fee is not paid. That happens later in the process. So that can always be changed to be onsite versus a fee and lieu.
And the last staff, it feels like I'm incorrect.
And the last stuff, it feels like I'm incorrect.
And there's no type of motion that we could make to say we would grant a waiver if the, you know, fee in lieu was, like, redacted, or...
We don't have the ability to enforce anything, like, there's no way for us to force them to do a park.
Beyond that, we're not actually, we shouldn't be considering anything like that, because it's not pertinent to the facts of the waiver for the specific piece of code that they want to not apply.
Okay. No, Dan.
It's the straw man walking a herring up a slippery slope following a bait and switch, if that's what the park is.
Any other questions?
Hard to know what I feel. Yeah, I guess what, I know if I'm reading this correctly, there was a part of a request to have like a 15-foot landscaping area to the north side of subject property, where we would normally require at least 30-foot. What's the reason for smaller?
The UDC requires a 30-foot, and on the current approval plan, there's a 50-foot vegetative buffer, and part of their alternative requirement was to have a 15-foot, which we would not be in. One, we wouldn't be in favor of it, two, if that's a reduction of the UDC requirement, that would require an additional waiver.
If it was a similar development type, like some kind of residential, you would need a buffer, would you?
It's based off of the zoning, so CO4 next to single-family residential requires that separation.
And then, where's the park in relation to the retention, or the proposed park in relation to the retention?
It's to the north. Yes, ma'am.
And in this approved plan, the detention pond is truly a detention pond, probably with, I don't know, earthen bake men, or if there's any type of concrete walls, but it's not a scenic pond, correct?
Yeah, I think my reading of the staff report was that it's actually large enough that it'll have to be fenced off and inaccessible.
Like, deep enough to where it would have to have a...
I can't remember what the depth is, but yeah, I believe, my interpretation, and correct me if I'm wrong there, was that it's large and deep enough that it would have to be fenced off.
And that's a cost kind of benefit analysis too. You can make detention and retention pond of different sizes based on depth and other stuff, so.
I always forget we have a civil engineer. You can like, you need to be as aggressive as I am.
I'm technically a professional civil engineer too, but I'm not really practicing anymore.
Okay, we've got two civil engineers here.
I'm never to that, it's fine. Okay.
All right, unless there's anything else, entertain a motion.
Move to deny all five?
Second half.
All right, we have a motion and a second to deny all five waivers. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed? All right, the motion passes and the waivers are denied. Thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I do want to say thank you, everyone who came out to speak. The, there is nothing in what we did tonight that would prevent a Play for All Abilities Park, and the city, and you guys too, voted in 2020 to approve a bond for parks that will include this. This is a very important thing. Thank you for your time, we really appreciate it.
All right, thank you all. Adjourn the meeting at 8:09.